To call to order the regular Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, January 14th. Please all rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Great, thank you. That's done. Moving on to my update. And didn't want to report a couple of things. First of all, it was nice to attend the opening of the new legislative session in Hartford last week. And just here, the governor's kind of state of the state address, which I know we're going to be getting a lot more about budgets and things like that later when he does his budgetary address. But so it's just nice to get go up there and speak to, you know, our newly elected legislature. So excited to get that started. Wanted to also just update, you know, let the community know we're in the full throttle in the budgeting process now. I submitted last week to the selectmen, my recommended operating budget for the town. I think we've really focused on trying to keep our costs down as we do every year. But this year, in particular, we're really just focusing on maintaining operations. Part of the Madison investment plan is recognizing that we're going to be continuing to see increases in debt service as the bonding projects grow into their fruition and we issue more bonds. And so every year we're all trying to offset that in some way with other things. So this year, the operating budget is we're that I submitted is growing at two and a half percent, which I think is a very reasonable number considering we're still in the midst of a lot of inflation and getting impacted by a lot of cost escalation. So so that process will be starting and encourage the public to participate. Each board, the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance have individual workshops that review the budget and make decisions. And there'll be a public hearing. The first public hearing will be in March and the second public hearing will be in April about the budget. So please just stay engaged and follow along. And there'll be a lot of information available on the website about how the town spends its money. So that's it for my update today. Any liaison reports?
I'll give a quick one just regarding our affordable housing committee. They I've been encouraging them to get together a presentation to come before the board just so that we can get an update on the work that they've been doing. And they do have some ideas regarding financial and or land trust funds that would help to move us in the direction of the ticking off an item on the affordable housing plan that we adopted a while back. So I'm hoping Peggy that they'll be reaching out to you in the next several weeks to get on our meeting schedule.
Great.
Nothing for me, Peggy.
Okay, great. I know you have some academies been moving along, but we're going to be hearing from them later. And we will have an update in February from the new school, the Neck River Elementary School. They're going to be coming and talking to us about where they are in the project, where they are in the budget, all good news, which is great. They're moving along and the redistricting plan that's set to launch this summer for the next school year is going to be moving ahead as scheduled. So but we'll be getting a full update from them and I think it's in February is the plan for them to come back. So, all right, well, great. So I think moving on to citizens comments, if we have some time here, please raise your hand and state your name and address and limit your comments to two minutes, please.
Go ahead, Fran.
Hi, Fran Brady, 108 GNC Lane, North Madison, just referencing some old business. I understand that we've had, we've all been very busy since I last presented my tree ordinance proposal in October, especially with the holidays and other pressing issues before the town. But the importance of establishing a proper tree ordinance has only grown each day. The need becomes more urgent as another specimen tree faces the threat of being cut down. Currently a number currently a rare disease free American chestnut on the nine acre wooded lot at 155 New Road is at risk. Already a number were apparently cut down earlier on the three acre southern lot. I sincerely hope that we can find the time to move this proposal forward. Thank you for your service and attention to this matter.
Great, thank you. Any other hands raised? There's an opportunity at the end of the meeting for public comment as well.
There are not.
Okay, great. We will move on then to item number six, the consent agenda. If I could have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So move.
Second.
Hey, great. And obviously a lot of reappointments. This is a kind of a standard process we go through every year with different changes on the different boards and commissions. And some people decide to stay on and serve another term, some don't, and it's kind of back and forth. I would just like to highlight one notable thing as we, I think, are appointing our new member to the Board of Finance. So we welcome him and he will be replacing Jean Fitzgerald. His name is John Muller. So welcome to him to joining the Board of Finance. So I'm sure we'll be have an opportunity to see more of him in the coming weeks and months. Otherwise, if all in agreement, all in favor, say aye. Aye, okay, just the three of us today right now. So consent agenda is approved. So thank you. Moving on to item number seven.
Excuse me, Peggy, I think Scott is ready to be promoted.
Okay, Jeannie, if you see him on there.
I got him.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Give him a second to come up. So today we're going to get an update from the Community Center Building Committee about their welcome Scott. And this is a follow on to several conversations, several meetings that we've had over the last since December and hear about the results of the bids that came out and kind of the project cost. And we'd asked the committee to come back with us with a recommendation about what they think the final package should be in terms of the project if we're going to go out and ask for additional funding. So want to welcome the committee chair, Joe Ballantyne, to who I see his name popping up. And Joe, is there any other are you is Colliers included in this as well? Or Joe, can you, oh, there you are. Good.
I had to be promoted. John Kopoulos is on also, and so he's and Tom McCary. There's Tom.
Great, welcome, welcome.
Good morning. Peggy, there there are a couple of other committee members that we might want to promote as well.
Sure, Jeannie, I know you know the committee. If you want to include the entire committee, that's great. Would love to have them join us. I know this is kind of an odd time. Usually we have evening meetings. Well, we're talking about Academy, but we're trying to get a lot done here.
Those who are listening and maybe don't see Dave Spurley, Vice Chair, has joined and Kelly and Joan Walker, also from the committee around, along with the architect Tom McCary. And I represent from Colliers, John Kopoulos. I don't see his name. Oh, there's John.
Yeah, he's great. All right. Well, I know you guys have been, you know, in lots of, you've had several meetings. And so I guess we look forward to hearing your report.
To just to bring everybody up to the same, the same point as where the committee is, just a brief recap. We had the bids for, we had put out the and RFP for the bids to bid on the full restoration of the building was put together by Tom McCary and the and his group. And the that was put out sometime in November, the bids came in on December 10th. From December 10th, from this point, we've been or we've been reviewing the bids and looking at details and looking for and and doing a review on the on the on the bids themselves. On our, on our, in some of our initial meetings, we looked at the, you know, the viability of each of the bidders and what they had bid. We eventually got to a point where we were able to look at the 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 bidders and the bid content. The bids were organized so that there was a general bid for a package for the sort of the building as a as a whole. And there were, I believe, 11 ad alternates that were bid independently. We reviewed the each of the each of these ad alternates at our previous meeting on the, I believe it was on this, on the seventh. We looked at which of the ad alternates we should keep in the for in the GC, which we thought would be best handled outside of the the award, the bid award. And we also found too that we felt that could be deleted altogether from the project. We now have and as of last last night, we took all that information, the the bids as presented for the for the total package, the base package and the ad alternates and looked at each of the ad alternates for for its viability and if had any any scope changes. And we came to several 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 conclusions. As I said, the two of them were eliminated, three would be handled outside of the GC and and the other five would be handled by the the GC. We that we come from that using that information, the information from the bids, information from the estimates from the scope of the of the project and with input from both the the Colliers and the and the architect QAM. We tried to develop and we and we came up with at least a version of what we think the total project will cost. The full dollar amount to of the project if we kept to the scope of the original referendum. Any questions so far? No, no. We have a, we have a version of that available. John, could you bring that up, please? It's long.
Certainly.
There's a lot of entries. If you share your screen, what you should see is a, okay, this, excuse me, this is the first of the the bid evaluation of the bid packages. You can see that we have five bidders and each of them did bid or at least indicated some bid on each of the ad alternates. The green, the green columns, as John will point to, were the ones that we believe that would be best handled by the GC and handled during the time of the construction. The 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 pink ones, the first, the first three.
First three.
We thought we'd be the three, five and eight would best be handled by the town resources. And they would be done or they could be done at or near the end of the project. The last two, one is an extra cover liquid encapsulant for lead paint that was deemed unnecessary. And that is an additional flooring step that was again decided that the 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 original concrete flooring polished would be sufficient and actually maybe even more attractive. So that those two, nine and 10 were eliminated totally from the scope of the project. This is the this, this is what we worked on last night and had some, some of an hour and a half or so of a of a good discussion about what we thought would be what what we thought would be the scope of the the cost of the scope of the project as it was envisioned in the 2022 referendum. The total related construction, which was originally estimated to be 12.1, 12.180 million, has been now been supplanted by the actual bid price of the lowest bidder. The total construction of that from that, which included both the base and the five add alternates was 18,958. This next where we evaluated the loose furnishings, AV equipment, some of it was, some of it's been escalated from the original. As you can see, each of those were escalated, I believe. Is that 6% John?
About 8% Joe.
8%, sorry.
Yes.
8% 8% escalation to account for the 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 cost increases between 2022 and 2025, when or when this was 25 slash 2026, when the construction would would go on. Some of the, some of the ad alternates, H I and J, were actually reduced. They the the scope, we thought that the scope was maybe a little over generous. And so we took some items out and those, those are lower than what you might see on the on the previous. But they they reflect what we thought was the 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 scope required for the building. Any questions so far? No, okay. The the fees and expenses, these were similar to what was what was in the original 2020, the the original 2022. Some of them were changed, the hazmat, that we found that we need the because of the amount of of abatement that's needed. The hazmat consultant cost has has been increased. Other than that, pretty much we were, you know, we were pretty much the same. The cost of the architect was also increased because of extra work that was required to get to the get to the final drawings. Last part are the the expenses. Some some escalations, some some adjustments. The the, well, one of the things that we need confirmed by the town is the financing costs. It was originally estimated to be $650,000. I think there was some information that we received that the bond, the bond costing was the bond costs, binding cost was less than originally estimated. So we put a lower number in there. Last, last but not least, the is the owner's construction and and project contingency.
Contingency.
Yeah, which is, which we debated up and down, but thought with the level of and the type of construction that an 8% contingency would be appropriate. Bottom line, the total project, an estimate for the total project now would be 23.948 million dollars, up from 15.9 and with a delta of eight, eight million, 49,000. You should note that we that there are we are not too far from the number that the 400,000 from the number that was listed as the bond, excuse me, as the 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 amount of the grants that we have. And the we believe we could, we could do enough changes in scope or 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 get that get down to meet that. But we thought that we wanted to start with the full cost, what we thought would be the full cost of the project before we before we began to reduce scope.
Well, thank you for that. I think that not knowing all the details perhaps of the different project packages, I wouldn't mind going back to the kind of what's in and what's out slide. So I just wanted to kind of hear you walk through the whole thing first. But I don't know if that would be helpful for the board, just to kind of talk a little bit more.
The add, the add alternates.
Yeah, the add alternates. And understanding where you had made choices to keep versus. So pretty much the I guess the first question is, you know, so item three, when we talk about the recital hall upgrades. Is that out of them, the the number you just showed us? You're basically excluding that?
The the recital hall was one of the areas where we made a few deep cuts to what was originally spent. We had, we took the the sound ending and the curtains out, which brought the the recital hall upgrades down considerably.
It's not the, it's the stage curtain, not the blackout curtains. I just want people to understand that.
Okay, thank you, John.
Yep.
And so there is a recital hall upgrade. It's a, it's minimal now. It's basically the basics of what the, what we might need in the in the future to be sure that the, you know, the infrastructure is there. But in terms of an upgrade, Joan, maybe you could add what what actually is still in that in the in the recital hall upgrade.
So so there's still going to be a significant stage. There's a ramp for ADA compliance to be able to get onto that stage. There's the capability now we have in the current proposal electronic curtains that may not be necessary in this space. We definitely want to potentially keep it for the gym because of the height of those windows versus the height of the windows in the recital area. We took out the sound deadening, the sound pieces because a sound person can adjust sound. I'm I'm driving, so this is why I'm here. At this point in time, it still would be a fully functional stage for awards, for small concert recitals of, you know, three or four pieces instrument wise. And it's perfectly functional as a good space. You're not going to put on a production in this in the recital space. The stage itself and the way the the seating is would not allow for a good title. Even if the stage is a good size, which it's a decent size, but it doesn't have the seating to allow for people to see way back if if you're doing an actual production and the amount of people that could be on that stage is much less than most stages that are in our, in our, you know, in the town, quite frankly. Which is why the gym piece was kept in for future. First of all, the the gym piece on the, the curtain was kept in because that's another sound deadening for when basketball and and other things are going on. And then we also, the only thing we kept in there was also the ADA compliant lift. Because if you are going to utilize that stage in the future where people could bring in their own equipment, which happens quite a bit in in theater, you bring in your own lights, you bring in your own sound. Then you'd have the capability to have performances in both spaces. So we did the basic to keep it functional for a very basic, but not something where we would produce, you know, we would have all the equipment for people to come in and do it right off the bat. That to me is something that we can do outside of the taxpayers' dollars.
Okay, great. That's helpful. So the just so I think that I'm getting a little back response here. Is anybody else here? Okay, now it's good. Thanks. So I think that there in the, when this originally went to referendum, we were calling the we're calling it a theater, right? The small theater in the front. And just to remind people, there's an area in the front of the building. This is not the gym. This is an area that was always identified for smaller events, small performances. And so we're kind of calling it recital hall now, just because I think people got very confused about when you say theater. Are you talking about the gym? Are you talking about the front, right? And really, the front is more about it's a smaller stage. The seating is actually, there's a section in the middle in front of the stage, and then there's these wings, these two other rooms that are going to be joined. So you can broaden out and have more people seating in this space. But they're not going to have great sightlines to the stage itself. So so this is not going to be a an auditorium type setup with stadium seating and everything else. It's going to be more of a room that's going to be multifunctional that has a stage in it to use for town meetings, piano recitals, award ceremony, things like that. So so I just want to make sure there's not confusion about what is going. That room was always seen as a multifunctional room that would serve the community. And you could do small, smallish theater on the stage, more like probably children's theater, if anything. So so that it sounds like those renovations are still there.
Yeah, I mean, children's theater may be a little difficult depending on the size of it, but it's it's presentable for those other things. And that was, that was, that was the thought process was to, you know, to have something fully functional on day one. It, you know, it may need a little help as far as, you know, sound, you know, the person coming in, but all of the the conduit will be laid in both spaces. So if there are upgrades in the future, that will be easy to do because the conduit will be there for the for the wiring to go through. So we don't have to take apart anything in order to do any upgrades if we want to in the future.
Um, so so I just, so from what am I taking away on this? And I don't know why I'm getting all this. Is anybody else hearing?
Yeah, I think I think it keeps popping to Joe. So Joe, if you're not speaking, can you go on mute and then just come back?
Okay, that that's helpful. Thank you. So I think that right now what this includes the stage making it ADA compliant, right, in the recital hall. So that will be ADA compliant, the stage in the recital hall, correct, John Kopoulos? Yes, okay. The stage will be ADA compliant and the walls will be taken down fully. Those two side rooms will be united so that it's more of one space. Is that still part of this plan? Because I know that we're back and forth on that.
Actually, that's a good question because that has been back and forth and I'm trying to remember where how that was left, Peggy. I don't know if Tom, do you know what the latest version of that is?
I I I recall what the latest version is. I still think instead of a large opening with with a with a removable, with a movable divider, it was changed to a small, a smaller opening, a double door with solid doors.
With doors, okay.
So really decide, there would be no sightlines from the wings, but it would be accessible for a larger meeting. You can move back and forth easily between the main, the center bill, the center recital hall and the two wings. If you had, if you were having a large meeting, but for the use on the stage, it would not be, you would, you would not be able to to have people in those outer rooms and have any sightline to the stage at all.
Right, okay. Okay, so it just because I just want to make sure we're clear, kind of. So when you talk about this upgrades thing, it's not removing any of those pieces. You're still going to have the other two rooms accessible. You're still going to have a stage that's ADA compliant. But you're not going to have, I guess, you know, I don't know what those upgrades included in the package. But I'm just trying to understand what by taking that out, what are we losing? Is there a list of?
So it's probably the the shortlist would be the sound dampening, sound system, light systems, that type of thing.
Okay.
What I would consider, you know, fixtures, so to speak.
Right, okay. All right.
Peggy, this is the, excuse me, this is the the area here showing what those flanking rooms, the connection format is now. At one point, we're looking at removing a full section of this wall here. But that has since been, you know, modified. And now we just have, you know, double doors connecting these side wings to the central recital hall space.
And what is the seating capacity of recital hall space in the middle there? Just just that space, not the community space to the sides?
I don't know if Tom may know that number. I think it's
If I can
one, oh, sorry.
I think it varies depending on the seating configuration. Is it tables and chairs? Is it just chairs? I think with just chairs, it's about 150 to 200.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking as well.
Okay.
Depending on how the roads are spaced.
Okay, so the so the spacing, the seating capacity, when we had talked about, I mean, I know this has gone through iterations. And I know part of the, when people talk about value engineering, there has been value engineering already to the space, right? Because it was going to be very cost prohibitive to actually make those open wings. And I know this was a conversation that was had like earlier in this year about that. So but still, the core space is a reasonable size meeting space that would have sightlines to the stage. The stage would be ADA compliant and it would allow for smaller type of performance. that would have sightlines to the stage. The stage would be ADA compliant, um, and it would allow for smaller type of, uh, performances. So that's in the core package that you're recommending.
Correct.
Okay, so I think this is helpful, just because there's been a lot of conversation about this. Um, and uh, so when we see those, uh, so by removing that, you're just talking about certain elements to the stage and the room in terms of sound and lighting, that's what that ad alternate was, right? That was not about, you're still going to be renovating the recital hall.
Yes, every, everything that's depicted on this drawing here is being done as part of the base scope of work.
Okay.
Here, the ramp access, handicap access to the stage, the modified stage, uh, there are curtains as part of the base scope.
Yeah, okay. Uh, and then, um, the, i- if we, we could go back to the alternate page again. I just wanted to make sure we all understood what that was, because that was something that had been removed. Now, if we could talk about the, I know Joan touched on some of this, the gymnasium performance upgrades. Um, so, um, i- if we could talk exactly what's in that pack?
That's basically refinishing the floor, uh, and a new curtain, and then an ADA compliant lift to be put in at that point. That's it. There's very lit, there's no other scope to that. And it was a very, a- as you can see by the dollar figure, it's, it was, we thought that that would be good to do it at this point in time, because then the entire area is ADA compliant then, and for future use, kind of thing. And then, uh, the stage curtain actually sat, um, is utilized as a sound dampener and also would be a protector if there's a basketball or pickleball game going on and nothing's going to jump up on the stage.
And, and there is no, so just to be clear, there's no, you know, fancy lighting going into the gym?
The only thing going into the gym, once again, is that conduit for future, so that we don't have to tear up any ceilings or walls when you go to do wiring, if in the future there's, um, you know, private funding to be able to put up those types of things.
Right, so if there was a group that wanted to fundraise and, and make some upgrades to anything in the building, all the, all that's in here is, you know, some space, some conduit, tubes, whatever you want to call it, to, uh, add additional, uh, upgrades later.
Yeah, the infrastructure.
Yeah, right.
Is part of the base scope of work.
Okay, and what about the bleachers in this?
Those, those were removed, Peggy.
Okay, so the bleachers are just gone. There's no bleachers in the gym?
Correct.
Okay, um, and the floor you said is just being refinished, so it's not putting in a new, what, what's the floor in that gym? Is it wood or is?
No, there is, there is a new floor system going in.
Yeah, the, the current floor is, uh, current floor is asbestos tile, uh, so that has to be removed and the, uh, uh, and then the, um, the, the, at the glue underneath it has to be removed.
Okay.
Yeah. In fact, the new floor is a resilient welded, um, sheet flooring that has a pad underneath it. It will look like a wood floor, um, it has a resilient pad underneath it, but the total thickness of the entire assembly is about a half an inch, maybe three quarters of an inch. Um, there was no real, um, there was no way for us to put a resilient wood, a true wood floor in there and get accessibility to the gym because of the, the chains.
And the height and everything. And, and just remind me though, but I guess, and this is because I know we've, these conversations have gone on for several years now, and I know we've talked about different scenarios, um, is the floor in the base package or is the floor part of this upgrade, uh, the ad alternate?
That's in the base package.
Okay, so the, the, the floor is going to get done in the base package. The ad alternate is just focusing on the, um, the curtain and, um, and then the ADA lift. Um, because I would have, we would have gotten the floor and that amount of money, so, um, right, okay.
And this, and the stage floor as well, the refinishing of the stage floor.
That's what's being refinished, okay.
Also in the base package are the, uh, the windows in the gym. There are several large, uh, large windows, uh, that, they are, uh, they will be, um, uh, essentially redone and, uh, and reinstalled. Uh, they're covered now with plywood to save them from any further damage and, but they were, the, the windows themselves will be, uh, will, will look the same as they are now.
So, so basically though, the gym will be a freshened, new floor, usable gym, um, with the base package, right? For gym purposes, and then the, um, this, the add-on package is, you know, uh, enhancements to the stage, basically. Um.
Oh, and, excuse me, and also to the gym itself, Peggy, uh, part of the add-on or electronic, um, backboards, uh, scoreboard and, uh, wall padding on the perimeter walls. So that's part of that, uh, alternate upgrade.
Okay.
It's not part of that alternate, it's part of another alternate. That's the gym equipment alternate.
Gym equipment.
Oh, that's a, that's a, okay, right, okay. Okay. Uh, yeah, because I'm just trying to, you know, when we talk about these packages, people understand what's in each of those would be helpful. Um, so that, that's helpful. I don't know, um, if we want to go back to that list again and just, I'm just trying to dig in so people understand, because I think that these, these are catchalls for a lot of different things, so I want, you know, the public to understand what's in each of these. Um, the, maybe we could talk about the, uh, sports equipment upgrades. Um, you're, you've opted to take that out, though. So you're saying that, that we, you're, you're not recommending that upgrades to the um, scoreboards or any of that as part of the package?
No, that, that was, let me jump to this, uh, summary here.
Oh, it was under.
That is this alternate here for the gym equipment.
Oh, you do have that in there, okay. I guess I was thinking like the red was ones that you were taking out and the green was ones we were keeping in, but I guess.
The red, yeah, just to clarify, the red, number three, number five, and number eight were removed from the general contractor's base bid scope of work.
Okay, not removed from the project.
And those were placed here, so three, five, and eight are these items here, Peggy.
Okay, all right.
It may be for future reference, we should move that to orange, and then the reds would be the removals that.
Yeah, like, yeah, and so, so that's where I got a little confused. So the red is not necessarily meaning you're removing it for the project, it's just that the contractor is not going to do it. We would bid it out separately, because it's more cost effective. Right, okay. Um, so the sports equipment you do have in the package still then, and, um, that includes, in addition to the scoreboardding and things like that, what else is, uh, in that package?
That, that is the, um, electronic backboards, the, the basketball backboards, electronic, the scoreboard, and the wall padding on the perimeter of the, of the space. Those, those are the gym equipment items.
Okay, all right, um, and then I think item six is worth having a conversation about, um, the parking lot upgrades. This is all included in this part of the base package, right?
Correct.
And really, six and seven are kind of the same, aren't they? I mean, it's all that whole redoing of the area because of the septic, or is there other elements of this?
There are other, other elements. I don't know, Tom, if you want to elaborate on, on that, but, um.
If you have a picture that you could show, like, like you did with, uh, do you have like an outside?
Let me find that, uh, page.
John, which alternate?
Um, the site upgrades and the parking lot upgrades.
Ooh.
Um, let's see where that is in this package here. If you want to speak to that, Tom, and I'll try to find the best drawing to share that.
So the site upgrades and the parking lot upgrades, Peggy, basically account for everything outside the perimeter of the building. The base, the very base scope of work, if those alternates were not selected, essentially includes a handful of concrete sidewalks just to get in the building and clean up of the existing parking area, like clean up the edges, um, so that we could create an, you know, accessibility at the new main entrance. But this is the overall site plan, and if you look to the upper left in the new parking lot, we are completely reconfiguring the existing parking area, making it a viable parking lot. We're increasing the, the parking spots by a significant number. We're creating a drop-off at the front entrance patio, so that um, people can be dropped off and there's an accessible path to the front entryway. We're creating a new dumpster pad location, new sidewalks at the perimeter of the parking lot, and new access walks to all four of the buildings. Um.
So, um, a- and just so to remind us, when we had originally done this a couple of years ago, this parking lot was really not going to have a lot. It was just going to be, I think, repaved or, or resurfaced, and, um, there was not an expectation of redesigning the parking lot.
That is, that is correct. It was, it cleaned up.
Right.
It'll be, it's going to be cleaned up. We also, as a part of this, have reconstructed all of the subsurface drainage, um, and rebuilt all of the infrastructure, um, to current town standards.
Um, and the septic, can you please tell, point out where the septic is?
So the septic field, the leaching field, is above the parking area and it runs through the outfield of the two softball fields. Um, so it basically runs north-south. Those were the only areas where the soils were suitable for the septic. That is both the primary and the reserve fields. And then the septic tank is outside the building, somewhere as I can't see it at this scale, and then, um, you know, the discharge runs from the tank out to the fields. But all of that piping runs under the new parking area, so you know, it's a little bit of a catch-22. I don't want to say it's entirely the septic field's responsibility, but the playscape has to be moved because of the septic field. We would be tearing up the parking lot anyways, because we have to run all the new infrastructure out to the septic field. So, um, they're sort of interchanged a little bit.
And, and where is the new playground expected to be?
So the playground is right here, um, directly to the right of the, sort of hammer configuration in the parking area. It's a fenced-in area right up against the building, just to the north of the entry patio. The entry patio is sort of, um, in, right there in the center of the screen, um, it has a patio and walk to the new entrance. It has a seating planting wall. And then there is the walkway to the south, um, parking area.
So just to highlight, I think that, um, from the public's benefit, that there's a, it's a positive that came out of this, because I think having the playground, and I know that your committee had talked about this a while back, adjoining the community center is going to be a, a, a good benefit for families. Um, so that, you know, if you have children of different ages, and I've lived through this, and I know everybody's lived through this, where you got one kid going to basketball and you have a, a smaller child, you're in like a more of a, an area that is, uh, adjacent to each other, and you're kind of interchangeable with the community center. So that's not the reason that it was moved. It was moved because we need the, uh, space where the current playground is to, um, for the septic system. But now we found a, a location that actually might enhance its use and be better for families.
Uh, that's correct. I think it's more central, it's more secure where it is. It's located between the community center and the play fields. Um, it's also going to be fully accessible now. Um, so I think there's a lot of sort of indirect benefits that came out of the replacement. Um, same thing goes for the parking area. There's now more parking directly adjacent to the fields. There's a drop-off loop, so, you know, families and athletes can be dropped off and picked up. Um, overall, the new configuration has the indirect benefit of, you know, better supporting the recreational, um, function and experience, as well as the security and lighting of the site and access to the site and circulation to the site. The previous layout was just a free-for-all.
Right, um, so, uh, the other question I had is, I, I know there's been some discussion about the pavers, I guess, that, um, had, were added by the, um, ACHA committee as, because they thought it was going to obviously make it more visually appealing. Um, can you explain that a little bit and what impact on costs that has had to the, uh, site work budget?
So the second alternate is the inclusion of the, um, site upgrades, which includes the entrance patio, which is all pervious pavers, which we talked about, is at the top of the image here, in the center. And then the connecting walkway that extends from the entrance patio to the south, um, uh, curb edge where the parking is along academies, not academies, is at a school street. That patio is all pervious pavers. It has, um, seating areas, has planting areas. Um, it has overhead, um, fastoon lighting. Um, this is seen not only as the accessway from the south parking area to the entrance, so we're creating now a new, fully handicap accessible entrance from the parking on School Street to the main entrance, but it's also seen as an activity area, an outdoor classroom area. It could be used for, um, art festivals. It could be used for a pre-function space where there's activities on the green. Um, it really expands the exterior programming options and takes what was gonna be just a simple five-foot-wide concrete sidewalk and, you know, really makes this an accessible experience for the center.
And will these kind of tie in with the brick theme a little bit that we have in our downtown, or these are, when we talk about impervious pavers, uh, is part of this trying to tie this together with the downtown?
Well, yes, in the, in the bigger picture, um, this is planned to be, um, continuation of the sidewalks, which are not seen in this picture, but they're to the right, to the east of the site. Um, so it's a link, but the pavers, um, are all similar in configuration, maybe slightly different in color. ACHA asked us to make them a tan and brown color instead of a red color, because the existing historic building has, um, very, um, distinct red bricks, so they wanted it to be, um, slightly different than that. But, um, it's very similar, um, configuration. And then all of the light fixtures, you know, Historic District Commission and ACHA were very specific about some of the amenities, the light fixtures, the, um, bollards, the benches, um, the plantings. Uh, I'm not blaming ACHA or Chippewa by any means, uh, um, I'm just saying that, you know, a lot of the direction, um, regarding this solution was approved by, discussed and approved by ACHA. Um, so, uh, that's where we ended up from a design perspective. It's, uh,
Well, but I think we have to, we have to remind that this is in the center of our town. It's part of the historic district.
Yeah.
And, um, and so, you know, we're, you know, this is, I guess, this plan, which was, you know, is, is trying to, um, tie into that, and, and so it looks like part of the community and part of the historic district, I, I'm assuming. Um, are, are there visuals that you've prepared, like, uh, sketches and things like that, that shows this?
There are renderings of this space that need to present to ACHA and HTC. I, I am sorry, I don't have them available with me, um.
Yeah, no, I, I think that would be, um, some of this, I think, is really important for people to understand what we're getting for our money, right? Um, and, um, you know, so allow the public to look at this, and we will be doing all that if, if we, if the board moves forward to referendum. Obviously, we're going to be providing as many visuals as possible, um, uh, because it's, you know, we have all these conversations about all these specific rooms, but it's easier when you're visualizing, right? So things like that. That's, that's a great.
Yes.
Yeah, so just so the public who's, you know, understanding when we talk about this, this walkway, this was, this was not part of the original plan, right? What? So, um, none of this was, so, um, the, but as we had to make some changes to the land around the building because of the septic system that required the parking, um, then there, it, it kind of, you know, evolved into, well, let's make it nice, you know, and not just nice, but something that's going to blend in with the, uh, uh, the, the historic district, so, um, yeah, so it's beautiful. Um, so, but this is where, when you see hundreds of thousands of dollars, right, added to the budget, i- i- this is driving that, obviously, right? Some of this is driving that. Um, so, just, I just want people. Um so just, I just want people to understand what you're getting for that money. And this will be usable functioning space.
Uh absolutely. Um it's really, you can see here in this picture, we really envision it as an outdoor activity space. You know, one of the original thought process was that this, this, this campus would be sort of a forming arts campus. And, you know, this exterior, this outdoor activity space or classroom or plaza is really envisioned as a program space um for the town to use.
Okay, great. I think this is good to see the updated visuals. I know the committee has been looking at all of this for a while, but uh just in terms of people who are attending our meetings. So, I mean, I think that that was, I just wanted to dig in a little bit today, and I know um we're kind of bumping up a lot of time. I don't know if board members have other questions. I'm guessing we might wanna ask more specifics again or reach out. Um I don't know if anybody else has any questions from the board.
I think it was helpful to go through the ad alternates in a little more detail. I think there's a lot of nuances there, so really helpful to peel back the onion. Thank you for doing that.
And then um, could you just remind me the size of the gym? Like what age of, say, basketball, for example, would the court be sized for? Is it, is it large enough for high school students? Or is it more like a a middle school and youth size uh basketball court?
It's, it's really more of like an elementary school-sized basketball court. So this will be youth activities, senior activities, maybe, you know, for lack of a better term, you know, older middle-aged basketball league and and uh but more appropriate, you know, the younger kids um basketball.
Perfect. And then the floor, it sounds like that's the same type of floor that welded sheet um like we just put in town campus. And that floor looks beautiful. Uh and then my only other thought would be, is, you know, with the patio being a different um kind of design that was originally anticipated, would there be an opportunity maybe to sell bricks to the community to help offset some of those costs? Just, you know, just throwing it out there as an idea.
Absolutely, that would be a an option. That's not currently programmed, but that would be an option.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Um so I I guess um the takeaway from this, you've come up with your recommendations. I appreciate all the hard work of the committee to do that. I think um our board has some big discussions. Um I think that obviously, there's a lot of detail behind these numbers. And um and obviously, the committee has been the group that has been really living and breathing this with our advisors over the last year. So I apologize if we seem not to know all the details, but I think we're all familiar with a lot of this. But, you know, now we're gonna be making decisions about asking for funding for all these things, right? So I think that's where getting in and peeling back the onion, so to speak, like Scott talked about, is important. If we're gonna be asking for more fun, you know, uh, you know, to be able to uh spend more money on this project in terms of applying the grant funds, um we need to know exactly what we're getting for that, cuz there's a lot of conversation out there about you're not even gonna get this, or you're not gonna get that, or it's it's loaded up with all this extra stuff when it's really not. Um so I think that's why we wanna make sure that we're clear about what we're getting in this package.
Can I ask one more question, just to sort of bottom something out? I just wanna make sure I understand it, and I think public understands it as well. Um y- y- you guys alluded to removing three, five, and eight as ad alternates from the contractors. So how does that, how does that process work? Is it, did they just, they understand it? They knew that going into the bid process that three, five, and eight were now off the table?
No, the um, the 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 process was, each of the bidders had to bid um separately on those, on all eleven items. Uh but they were at alter, that's meaning they could be either awarded or not awarded uh to the general contractor. So uh we, the the committee went through and 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 made the, some of the decisions we talked about earlier. What what can be, uh what can be best handled by uh an an outside firm and not the general contractor? And what parts of the uh, or parts of these ad alternates are best done concurrently with the construction of the building? Like, for instance, the parking lot upgrades and and the site upgrades. Uh that probably was never gonna go any anywhere other than the general contractor, but we wanted to uh, we wanted to make that a a a choice. Uh if you, if you look at some of the values we got, that we got some pretty widespread of uh
Yeah.
uh of bids. Uh and uh so we also looked at that, and we also looked at how it impacted the total cost. Uh and if you scroll a little to the left, I think you find PAC is the um, the 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 lowest overall uh at this point.
I guess, Joe, I just wasn't sure on the legal obligations from a contracting standpoint when we're or bidding, a bidding uh process standpoint.
Um From the
You know, how how that works, whether, you know, we've now decided we're pulling some things back. How did, how does that process work? I'm not as familiar with that.
That was, that was fully understood uh from the beginning, and that's why they were, uh that's why they were added. That's why we put them in as ad alternates. And they, they would be awarded separately uh from the general, from the GC contract.
Thank you.
And then I'm just gonna piggyback on Scott's question, just for purpose of clarity. Even though uh some of these ad alternates are being peeled back from the GCs, it doesn't affect where the funds are coming from to pay for these projects, correct? It would all still be paid through the bonding referendum.
That is correct.
Okay, fantastic.
It may, it may, it it may change some of the timing because we uh and it it the um funding would not, or the the payments will not go to the GC. It would go to a a different contractor. At a different, over a different time period.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, great. Um all right, with that then, I guess, um I appreciate uh the report. Um I think we might wanna mull over, um, you know, I think what would be helpful is to have like just a list, you know, of
And then what's out.
Yeah, what's out, what's in. Not a lot is was taken out, really. You you dropped two of them. It sounds like completely from the uh package. Um and just explaining, and I know you have this in other parts, but just, you know, a summary thing that just explains what each alternate.
We we finished, we finished this about uh seven, seven o'clock last night, so uh
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I understand. I I'm just saying
We didn't have a lot of time to put that that kind of thing together, but
Yeah.
Uh we we were available to be able to discuss what we, what we decided uh and now be able to get, you know, move towards more of a presentation than just an explanation.
Yeah, no, I I appreciate that, and I understand that. And having our questions, you'll understand like how you and the we'd see it versus how us coming fresh into it, look at it. So I think having the details would be really helpful.
And and the public, right? I mean, it's important to sort of have the public understand what's in and what's out. I think that's the most important thing.
Yes.
Um so um I guess with that, then I think the other uh item on here is I just had a quick discussion as a follow-up to our special meeting last week about um, you know, timing of doing any kind of referendum if we were gonna move forward with that. So uh thank you for attending, everybody. Um and then the board will just have a quick conversation, I think, about the timelines. Um and um so we'll move on to act mate.
Is Bruce coming at all?
Bruce is gonna be, he said it might be towards the end of the meeting.
Okay.
So um
I have to go. See you guys. See you, Peggy.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
I'm I'm gonna, I'm gonna hang on, but you could take me off as a panelist.
Yeah, I think Jeannie just have the board. So um when we met um last week, it seems like um we discussed um, you know, the the various pros and cons of uh doing something more quickly to get approval from the town to apply the grant funds prior to the bids expiring, which is March twentieth, or waiting until May sixth. And we kind of saw that there were a lot of pros and cons to each choice, right? Um my takeaway from that conversation was that we were leaning heavily towards May sixth. And there were, you know, there's definitely some cons to that, but there the the pros seem to outweigh the cons of where we are. And I think today's conversation shows, there's a lot of information we still need to get out to the public. And if we wait until May sixth, we're gonna have more time to do that and do that in a clear way, so that they can make an informed decision when they're voting on this. Um versus trying to push something through uh prior to March twentieth. Um so I did just uh send around a kind of a draft timeline of what that would look like. Um and um I feel like we've gotta set this in stone at one point. We can't vote to call the referendum because we don't wanna do that until the timeline, that kicks in a whole official timeline. But what we might wanna do, which is what we did last time, is adopt a town timeline officially. That allows the town clerk, the register of voters, to start ramping up and scheduling rooms for the referendum, although we know it's a budget referendum, but just, you know, making or organizationally figuring things out, thinking about the ballot. It gives them the green light to go ahead and start making all these wor- um uh uh plans. And then it also allows us to start scheduling our meetings that we have to do, and the Board of Finance participates in this, and a town meeting. So we kind of need to like, and so my thought was formally adopting a May sixth timeline um at our next meeting that would lay out the schedule. Um and um, you know, the timeline, I just sent her on a draft to the board. It's it's very it focused on more trying to use regular meeting dates, right? Do we wanna try to do this outside of our regular meeting? Um or do we wanna just try to keep this as much to our meetings and the Board of Finance meetings? There's pros and cons to that. Scheduling is easy cuz we all have it on our calendars. We have the rooms. We have the facilities available. But is it um, you know, the most beneficial? Cuz we also do a lot of business at our meetings. So now this is a big hot topic. Obviously, we're gonna have a lot of the public attending, so we gotta think about that. Um and, you know, I I was, so I it would be helpful to get some feedback. I don't know if you want me to show this timeline. I can, Jeannie, if you could maybe share it, or actually, I can share it. I think I've got it. Let me just see if I've got it. Um
Before you do that, just
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe just a reaction or a couple of questions to what you were just saying.
Yeah.
Um I just wanna make sure we're clear. So what this means if we go to the May sixth is um, we would likely be required to do a rebid, correct?
Correct.
And so did we, I know there was a conversation during our last meeting about potentially going back and asking whether or not the the bidders would extend their their bids. Do you know, did, did that happen?
Uh, good question. Um I don't know if there was any, we never formally requested them to do that. I don't think the building committee formally requested. I think the the question was, the the thought process was um, we needed them to have some time to look into, was this the best way to configure it? That, you know, cuz this was pushed out with the idea that we wouldn't be too far off, right, our budget? That we might have an ability then to kind of swap in an alternate or two, and we'd be there, right, with our budget. Um and so that's how it was structured with all these alternates. When the bids came back, we realized we are so far off what our estimates were, right? So that left us in a very different kind of conversation. So I feel like that bid was structured because of, on a basin, they, uh uh on a different set of estimates, you know what I mean? And now reality has set in, and it's like, do we really wanna stick with that package that was structured to suit that purpose, when we know that that didn't necessarily optimize it things for the project? Um, welcome, Bruce. So um so we just finished with the commu- uh the Academy Committee, and they walked through um uh and we'll, we'll try to get you up to speed. Um and now we're just talking about the timeline. We just started the conversation about the timeline. Um and I was saying that if we wanna move forward with the May sixth re- referendum, um and that seemed to be where the board was leaning, that we needed, we we will need to vote at our next meeting just to officially adopt, not call the referendum, but just adopt a timeline so that that we can start planning meetings and scheduling things and stuff like that. Um Scott, you you, you're right. So um do we wanna hold off until we have that conversation? Do we wanna hold on to these bids? I think what I'm scratching my head with is, these bids were way off what the estimates were. So why, why, uh the more I think about this, why are we bending over backwards to accommodate a pa- a bid package? They kind of blew our budget, right? Um, we know we're risking that there might be a slight, you know, that these could creep up again. And when we, if we do a rebid after the May sixth referendum, assuming it gets approved. But um I don't feel like we've got this, you know, great pricing that we're trying to hold on to either, you know what I mean? So um
So no, what like, um, from an industry standpoint, and this is where I think we need coaching from Colliers and and maybe others, but i- is it cool to 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 pull back a bid and go rebid something? Um, you know, and and I think we're, I think in the process here, refining scope and trying to, you know, cross our Ts maybe a little bit more in advance of the of May sixth referendum, if that's in fact where we're going. But I I guess I, I I just feel like we need some guidance, cuz this is not our area of expertise. Um, you know, I I have certainly haven't gone through that process before of a rebid. So I just, I just wanna make sure we're not, you know, stepping in any landmines or or, you know, legally, I don't know what the issues might be.
Well, and I think we, we did talk about it in our last meeting a little bit, but I think it's worth having them come and talk through that again with us. Um uh, you know, and so you were saying, I mean, cuz obviously for us to do anything prior to the big, the expiring, we would have to get rolling now, right? So and I think we kind of recognize that that's probably not a practical, realistic option for us at this point, to go out to referendum prior to make March twentieth. So if we can kind of, if we've concluded that, and I'm assuming we have, that helps. Now we can put that aside. Cuz i- if if we were still gonna try to do this before those bids expired, we would now really need to be rolling on on scheduling meetings and all this other stuff. Um uh, so um your question is more, do we ask the bidders to keep their bids till May sixth or May seventh, right? Um
That that may may be a faux pas in the industry. I I don't know.
Highly unlikely. People usually hold bids for thirty days. It was extraordinary that they were keeping up for a hundred.
Hundred, yeah.
We could, they could have tho- those conversations. I'm not, I I've not been, uh, I have not spoken to them. So I can get an update from Colliers and whether or not any conversations have been had. Um and then um go from there. I guess the question is, if we do that, then we're kind of stuck now with a package that is also not necessarily the most, best pricing, right? So um but it is giving us um assurance of what the pricing is gonna be, right? So um
Peggy, one other option we had spoken about at our last meeting was whether there was time to rebid a package uh in light of the timeline leading to a a May referendum. Um, look, the history of this project, uh we've been reminded several times that those folks that professionally provide us with cost estimates are um not always able to accurately predict what contractors are gonna actually bid. And um uh I guess I am somewhat hesitant to go back to referendum unless we are pretty sure we have a solid number to present to the public.
Hmm.
Um so I I guess uh as Scott has suggested, uh I think we need to ask our advisors whether there's time to actually rebid this so that we have a solid number to take to the public.
Um, so the, these are all, we can ha- I've had, I've asked those through town staff at times.
Sure.
Um and, you know, our construction manager, who we now have a professional in this area that uh joined the town July first, that was part of our um plan for the facilities department, um has a lot of experience in that. And I think that, and I don't wanna speak for him, and I think maybe we organize a conversation about this another time cuz I didn't prepare him for this. I don't wanna kind of drag him into this now. Um but I mean, i- i- you know, i- it is, the problem is you you don't have the funding secure, right? Um and that's how I look at this, right? So you're setting it, you're almost setting yourself up for failure again, right? Um because now you you don't have the fund, all we've done is take some of the alternates out and and we, or we've packaged it, so it's maybe a cleaner, simpler package. But we still don't have that funding secure. So why is this more attractive than other projects out there in the market that have the funding secured? And we went through this with the new school, right? We were on paper just trying to get the funding secured so they could go out and and move forward with their bidding process, hoping we were still gonna be below that. Right? Uh normally, you get, you have like a budget, and then you go out to bid. That's the typical process. This was unusual because the estimates were coming This was unusual because the estimates were coming over the budgets, but we we thought some of it was we might luck out because as we saw with the school project that they came in low. So we said, let's take the risk. Because there's so many unknowns in renovating an old building, let's take the risk and just see where the bids come out. And that's what we ended up doing. To try to do that again before a referendum, I don't know what's changed. If you're a contractor, why is this a better project now? You know, there's still uncertainty about the funding. You don't know how the public's going to vote. Um, so whereas if we were to rebid after the May sixth vote, at least the public is supporting it, right? And the pub, and so they, there's a fixed budget. Um, so that was, like I said, the conversations that I had internally, talking with staff. I think if the board wants to have that conversation, let's have it, let's talk again about all this. We talked a little bit, we talked some of this last time, right? But we can, we can kind of readdress it before we kind of formalize any decisions moving forward. Happy to do that. Um, and I'll have, um, I think our uh, um, him available as well as Colliers available for that conversation.
That would help. I just, I I, again, I'm thinking about this in in a very naive way, probably, but I can't imagine you know, putting putting a hold of bids aside. So so that's a whole nother conversation. But, you know, whether or not we even get the same bidders um, in in a rebid. Uh, I, there's no guarantees, I would, I would assume, right? Maybe we, maybe it opens up to more bidders. Maybe some of the same bidders don't come back. I I, who knows, right? But I I I have to think in fairness to the people who are bidding, there's a cost to bid as well for them. So um, I I just want to be conscious of that and and really understand the process.
End up, he might, um, he might have some insight into Scott's question.
Sure, if you want to invite Peter up. Like I said, we hadn't prepared to have this conversation today. So, um, but Peter, if you want to share, Peter is our facilities director who started with us at the beginning of the year. He replaced Bill McMahon just for the public's benefit. And uh, and our construction manager worked for Peter.
I just, yeah, I think, I think it's a good, I think Ben's ready to 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 discuss. He's on the on the call right now. Let's, I think we should call him up. He's got a lot of good insight on this.
Okay, I didn't want to put him on the spot, so, but.
He's ready to roll.
All right.
It happened real time. Nice, Ben. Look at that. No pressure, Ben, no pressure.
Hey, you guys know, if I'm going to be in a meeting, I'd rather participate.
Awesome. Thank you for doing that. And sorry to put you on the spot.
No, 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 no problem at all. Always happy to to talk about this. And and these are conversations that Peggy and Peter and I have had uh, briefly in anticipation of of a decision being made on when the referendum was going to happen. So so happy to answer some of kind of those situational questions. Um, of course, they all come with the disclaimer of who the heck knows what's going to happen when we go out to the market. But just to kind of address some of your concerns. So first of all, um, rebidding is not a faux pas. Um, it, there, there is no problem in in canceling a bid process and starting again. Um, that happens all the time. Um, the 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 number one reason why that happens is projects come in over budget. Um, they even happen on state school construction grant projects, and then you have to go back to your funding sources. A lot of times work with the states. Thing, so it, that's, that's not a problem. In terms of bidding again before May, I think you're basically just going to be in the same situation. What I think we should do is use the time between now and the May referendum to put together as tight as a bid package as we can. Uh, it sounds like the committee now knows what they want out of the building. Uh, they know where their alternates are. Uh, we bake those right into the bid package. Uh, one of the issues with this bid process, just on my kind of cursory analysis of it, is the alternate pricing had a very high standard deviation. Uh, so whereas the the base bids, you had a couple within ten percent of each other, which is good. The alternates had a huge fluctuation, which means there were some misunderstanding in the market about how those were presented. Uh, so the more we could get those into the into the base bid and clearly explained, the better. Um, sometimes it's hard when you're parsing through, you know, two hundred page plans, figuring out what's in and what's out. Uh, so that's an opportunity there. So another thing, as Peggy mentioned, is going out to the market kind of is with as strong of a position as you can, where it's, we have the funding in place, we mean business, we're ready to go. Um, this one was going out there, and I'm not saying it was a bad idea. I think, given the circumstances and giving the budgetary uncertainty, kind of testing the waters a little bit. I mean, it it did pay some dividends here. I mean, if you hadn't done that, uh, that's usually not a recommended practice, but if you hadn't done that, I think you'd actually be in a worse situation. So looking back, it probably was a good idea. Um, but it it's also now made you gun shy of the standard process, which is budget referendum or secure funding through whatever source you're going to do and then build. I mean, we've been doing that in the public industry forever. Um, and and from time to time, your budget isn't adequate, and you do have to go for for additional. Uh, so if we bid after the budget again, uh, we we are in a very strong position. It shows that the funding is in place, will attract the most bidders. We hope to have as clean of a bid package as possible, increase market participation, all all those things. Um, so I think that that's a good, you know, as you're thinking through your your steps here. Um, just, just to keep that in mind, that I I don't think anybody's going to fault us for what we've done so far and doing this kind of in a measured fashion.
They will, Ben. Oh, they will. Oh, they'll fault us.
I mean, the contractors, I don't mean the the.
Wink, wink. Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. That was really helpful. Is there, sorry, can I, can I ask one more question? Sorry, while I have the mic. So.
Happy to hand the mic over to anybody else on this.
I don't know if this is a Ben question, a Peter question, or even just the board selectmen question, but just something we need to be thinking about is just the public optics of of time, elapsed time. Um, and I guess I I worry about that, that, you know, obviously from a twenty twenty two referendum. And now, you know, the the needle continues to move and, you know, the building is having issues and, you know, gets worse over time. Like, I did, is, are we at risk at all by moving this to May and then having the bids after the fact that, you know? I don't know. I don't know what I'm saying, but that that, I I worry about just that elapsed time. You know, from when the committee started their process to when a pub, the public is actually going to get a a community center. It's been a while now. It's been a hot minute, so.
So kind of my, maybe even outsider's take on that is, yeah, it has been a while. Um, and I think we're doing that across the board, not just with Academy, but we're doing that with a lot of projects throughout town and and the Board of Ed projects. Is, um, you know, a lot of these things have lingered. Um, one of the reasons why I was happy to come here was to start pushing these projects forward. Uh, but I would say what we don't want to do is kind of now in the eleventh hour, uh, stumble and end up build. The the worst thing we could possibly do is spend any amount of money on constructing a building that doesn't meet its end use. So if that means waiting three months to get there, um, I I think that's probably time well spent. But your point is definitely valid. I think the optics of it probably are like, wow, this is taking a long time. Um, you know, get you guys, get your act together and get moving. Um, that's just something, I think that's going to be said whether whether you referend them now or three months from now.
I want to call a spade a spade, but I think your point is well taken, you know, Ben, that, um, you know, we want to cross our Ts here too. So, thank you.
Yeah, I could not agree with Ben more. I mean, this has taken this long at this point. This is not the time to just sprint to the finish line and trip over our shoelaces, so to speak. I mean, we, we had, I think, three different committees that went into designing and researching and this whole package. And I think, you know, that's where, that's where this whole thing got pushed out. It's, it's not where we're at right now, just from my perspective, um, as a Board of Select member. But also as somebody who was not on the Board of Selectmen, when this first, when this whole conversation first started, um, gosh, I don't even know what year that was, twenty nineteen. You know, and I know it's been going on even longer than that. So I know the public is very anxious to see this project have a finish line and cross that finish line, whatever the case may be. But to, to push for March and not wait until May, that just, it makes zero sense to me. So I think, you know, getting as much information out to the public as possible, getting our bids as tight as possible. You know, really making a definitive decision on what we're presenting to the public is the most important thing at this point.
Yeah, one, one thing I just like that, if I may, is, is when you're concocting what this new budget number is, you know, give yourself room there. You're going to need it on a project like this. This is a very old building that sit vacant for a long time. If there was ever a building where something was going to go wrong in the construction process, you're going to find something you don't want to find, it's this. So what, what made me nervous about this project when I was first learning about it, first walked through the building is, you know, normally on a building that's been sitting that long, um, it, you're doing more of a gotten renovate. Uh, this is not a gotten renovate, but this is an expensive project. Uh, so it 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 falls short of, you know, if you were going in there and saying, hey, we are going to completely rip apart the interior, make sure the bones are good and kind of rebuild it. That's one thing. You you you're not, your your risk potential is a lot lower than in in a building like this where we're leaving hazardous materials in place. We are not doing this, we're not doing that. So there's, there's going to be a big, so my my suggestion, when we were talking about what that budget number would be, um, in the committee last night, went further than me with with actually breaking down all the pieces. That's great. But last week, my original thought was, it's a take your median bid, not your low bid, take your median bid, add all your alternates in. If you parse them out later, whatever, fine, add ten percent to that. That's your new budget number. Because you, what you really don't want to do is go out to referendum again and then find out that, A, your bids don't work, which they probably will, because again, you take that median bid. But what you really don't want to happen is during the project, something happens and now you're like two hundred dollars short of fixing a problem that's a showstopper in the building. And we're like, we don't have any more budget. So now what do you do? You go out for a supplemental referendum, you're pulling SIP funds from somewhere else, which is going to annoy a lot of people. Um, so what I've learned in my experience, because it is painful to go back to the well uh, for more money, is is give yourself some room there. You could always give it back. Um, and and we've shown that on a lot of our projects in in town. You see, we've been, we've been giving money back and and a lot of these SIP products that have been done. Um, but I I would, I would give yourself as much cushion. If you think you're going to need twenty four, go for twenty five. Put it right on the record. If we don't need it, we're going to give it back. But if you get into this project, you need the money, there's going to be a problem. I know there were some issues brought up recently by the building inspector for some insulation, some building insulation. Um, I don't think that's even been worked in the project yet. I think the design team is still digesting that right now. That could have a seven figure cost implication. Uh, don't mean to drop that as a bomb, but that's just an a a sense of things that happen where you're going to want to have that extra budget. So anyway, just my financial two cents.
Thank you for that. Um, I know Joe Ballantyne has raised his hand. He wanted to contribute to the conversation for a moment, so. Go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, I I just, just like, I I certainly agree with uh, uh, what's been been done so far, but there's an additional risk that uh, we have not, um, that hasn't been mentioned yet, and that none of these, none of the bidders are 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 in any way bound to not to take this to the finish. Any of them in the next a hundred days can take, can do a, can simply withdraw their bid. And um, the uh, that risk, uh, if we go out again for for a, uh, we get enough, if we get the the uh, uh, the the proper funding and to go out for a bid, go off a bid and make an immediate award, uh, would at least eliminate that that risk. But uh, we could, we could go three, four, or five weeks from now, and 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 any of those bidders can withdraw their bid.
Yeah, they would, they would have a tougher time doing that, uh, because the really, the only way that you could withdraw from a bid without having your bid bond hit is you you have to claim that you made a clerical error in your bid computation, which is what one of the bidders did that dropped out. Uh, but that's certainly getting into calling bid bonds and all that is not a fight you really want to do unless unless you you have to. Uh, and it says, especially because we now know that our funding isn't there. Um, I think bidders would be able to contest that too and and say, um, hey, you can't call my bid bond on a project you're not even going to build right now anyway.
All right. Well, I think that, um, that that's helpful, Joe. Um, I think, um, I guess the question is, you know, does anything we've talked about today change our timeline? Our objective? So I think, um, you you know, my thought is the next.
Yeah, it changes March.
Yeah, right. Well, so May sixth, it sounds like we'd been kind of leaning in that direction. Look, I was, I was the one advocating for get it done. But that was when I thought we were going to be either within the budget or slightly over the budget, not seven million dollars. Um, so it's a different conversation when you have to really understand what's driving that seven million and what's the best next steps, right? So we need time to make sure that we're doing the right thing and that we have the right numbers and, um, and that we communicate to the public. And the last thing we need to do is push through with a timeline that's not going to allow that. So, um, the timeline I sent to the board um, really would require us, if we adopt this at our next meeting, which is on January twenty seventh, uh, would require us roughly around February third, which is our regular meeting, to kind of uh, pick the number, right? Um, and so because we would be voting on a supplemental appropriation for a certain amount of money. And we have a recommendation now from the building committee. I think we need to spend a little time thinking this through, understanding what's in those numbers. Do we want to change that? Um, obviously, we have an issue about, you know, the number they came back with is higher than the grant funds. So that, you know, we got to talk about how we would think about that, what we would get permission to do. Um, so we would target, uh, having that decision made by February eleventh. There's some wiggle room in that date. We could push it out. Um, uh, we could push it out for a a a couple of weeks if we needed to. Um, and it would leave basically, um, you know, the month of March to educate the public um, uh, about this. We would, you know, do the final call to a referendum on April ninth, and that is kind of our hard date. That's a date where I would say April ninth is where we would want to have, because now we're getting into, this is going to be on the budget referendum. So we need to have like a certain timeline that we're going to be following. So April ninth is really the hard date that we have to have our question. We have to have our amount. We have to have everything solidified. Um, but we also need to get a Board of Finance, I guess, approval prior to that. So, um, so there's some flat, what I set you was, you know, kind of like using our current meeting schedule and figuring out how it would work. I think we don't need to solidify this today, but think a little bit more about it. Do we want more time to come up with that number? So do I build into this instead of February eleventh? Do I push it out a little bit more later in February? That means the Board of Finance would have to schedule a special meeting after we come up with our number. Because our number, we make a recommendation, then it goes to the Board of Finance, right? So I was trying to stick with, we have our meeting, they have their meeting, you know, that doesn't, it doesn't mean it has to be that way. So I can, if you think we're going to need more time coming up with that, what that number is going to be and our our process, um, then I can kind of push this out a little bit. But right now, I'm, you know, our number choice would be by uh, February eleventh.
So I have, I have some thoughts about this. Um, I think as far as arriving at a number, Ben has already done most of the math for us. Um, and he probably knows exactly what that number is. Um, so I don't think we need a lot of time if we're going to agree to his methodology. Uh, maybe give he and Peter some time to rethink it and and see if they, they they want to stick with that uh, median number plus the um, the extras plus the, you know, the ten percent, whatever. You know, re- maybe maybe give them a little time to polish that math up a little bit, but I think that happens pretty quickly. Um, as far as meetings go to discuss this, uh, my preference would be to have um, a couple of special meetings in the evening, one topic um, where we don't come in with a sixteen item agenda and try to squeeze this conversation in. Also, um, having the conversation in the morning um, might be frustrating for people that are trying to follow this because they they can't make it. And so by scheduling a special meeting in the evening, um, it gives people at least a chance to follow along in real time. If if nothing else, you know, the the people that are in favor, people that aren't in favor, at least they get to stay posted. So, um, I would be prepared to sign up for a couple of special meetings if we needed to do that.
Which, which I will highlight, I I I I do agree with you. I mean, um, obviously, using our Tuesday morning meeting is not the optimal thing. The issue we've got is we've got budget workshops too. So I just wanted to flag that. That's why I need to really start planning, because we've got all these budget workshops. We've got budget meetings. It's kind of hitting at the same time. So, um, so does the rest of the board agree you'd rather do most of these conversations in special meetings? Okay.
Yeah, I'd say special meetings, or if we're going to do it during one of our regular meetings, keep the other agenda items light.
Right, okay.
I mean, in theory, we can dedicate, we can dedicate an evening meeting to just a topic like this, right? We can just keep the agenda.
Yeah, we can. It 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 just, um, it just, um. Yeah, we can. It 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 just, um, it just, um, you know. As you know, there's a lot of things that people wanna come, we heard from the public today, you know, that there are a lot of things that the the public wants us to address. Um, so I'm just trying to be mindful of that and also know that there's a big time commitment, just reminding the public, because of the budgeting process. We have all these other special meetings going on, so we gotta, you know, people have lives outside of this. I know this is my full-time job, but the rest of the board. Um, so we need to kind of make it work plus staff, you know, um, so I'm just trying to be mindful of that. Um, so I I will rethink this timeline a little bit. Um, and you know, maybe what we vote on on the twenty-seventh is not. Dates specifically, but just we, that we're gonna work towards a May sixth referendum without a specific calendar schedule. Cuz I think that's gonna have to evolve a little bit, but I will refresh this with some ideas about how we could work the schedule. Um, to to be more common, so we could have more, uh, some of these in the evening. And then I'll have to have some offline conversations with Ben and, um, and Peter about, you know. What other due diligence do we need to do before we finally nail this all down, right? Um, cuz once again, we don't wanna, you know. Get fixated on a number and say, this is the number, and then all of a sudden, something else comes in two weeks later, and we're like, oh, we should have added that to this, right? So, um, and so I just don't know what that is right now. Um. So I think then, um, so, you know, so I think that'll be the goal then, um, is just kind of sign up somehow blessing in some way at our next meeting, May sixth. To allow the planning process to begin for that. And then we'll, we'll, we'll figure out the detailed meeting schedule, um, in the next couple of weeks. Um. Okay, well, I guess we'll, we'll move on from there. Um, a lot of good conversation though, and I, and I know I went into the weeds a little bit on the project, but I think. We really need to do that to clarify. There's just a lot of like, uh, you know, information floating out there. And I wanna make really sure people understand exactly what is in this and what, what. And I thought, seeing that visual, I haven't seen it in a while. I mean, look how beautiful. This is gonna be in terms of, it's it's transformational to the whole space down there. And that's where I think we gotta look at it a little differently. It's not just renovating a building, it's transforming. That whole part of Madison by the green.
End space to usable space.
Yeah, it's a usable, beautiful space. Um, and that's gonna have a big impact on, I think, activity down in that area and benefit our downtown. Um, it's gonna create economic activity, so, um, so anyway.
I I walk that space Peggy, and it, it that the transformation will be unbelievable. I mean, right now, it's really pretty rundown and, uh. And and but what we saw was much better. But I did wanna ask what you thought the committee would, uh, what what our charge would be. Uh, I I have an idea what it would be, but I just was wondering what the with the board might, uh, expect from the, uh, building committee. As we go, just in the short, even in the short term.
I mean, I think the first thing is just a little more detail, um, you know, which, uh, your advisors could prepare about what's in. What's in this, right? Um, now, um, with with the choices that you made, and then what was opted out of it, right? Uh, I think that would be helpful. Um. You know, I I I don't know.
And what's out. I think it's super simple.
Yeah, I just think, you know, you know, you can take your time now, cuz I appreciate that this was just a conference, you just met about this last night. Um, but just having some detail on that. And I think even if that were to be done, if Colliers could do a memo, just ex, you know, highlighting that with a table, like. Boom, 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 this is in this piece, and and this is why these two things were left out, that kind of thing. That would be helpful.
One, one of the things that, uh, as as we look forward and listening to the conversation. Uh, i- if we're going to, if we are going to rebid that, if that becomes the preferred path. Uh, I think we would put it back all into a single bid and not have, not have the add alternates. Uh, because the, I agree with Ben that the, the, um, it, I think it showed that the. Understanding of what's in and what's out in the add alternates varied from from bidder to bidder. Uh, and that's why we got the the large variations, and we could remove that by making a, making it into a single, a a single package. And make it one award instead of, uh, instead of you using the add alternate approach. Something I'd like to discuss with the committee and our, and our people, but I'd like to, uh, I'd like to talk about that.
Um, in terms of the, yeah, and that would be part of the conversation as we move up to referendum, like how that bid package would be structured.
Right.
And, you know, that that is, you know, ideally, we want to pick our number. Have the vote, and if it passes immediately, within days, go out and get this launched, right? Get the bid out, um, because we wanna get things moving as quickly as we can. Um, so we'll, we'll certainly be.
That would preclude us going to the bidders and asking if they will hold their bid. Which we can do. That's something we, we can do, but.
Well, I think, I think.
Doesn't appear we're going down that path.
I think that we heard pretty good advice that that's not really going to, um. Help the project, so to speak, but I don't know. I guess have we made a decision that we're not gonna ask them to hold the bids?
I think that's what I'm hearing.
I think there's a general consensus here that that's not the preferred path, cuz I don't think we necessarily benefit from that. So.
Agreed. Yep.
Okay. Okay, so, um.
Thank you.
So with that, yeah, thank you, Joe. And, um, uh, so with that, we will move on, I guess, to, we got another, a couple of other agenda items. I know Ben is is here for some of those anyway, so, um, and Peter. Um, so if if the board is good, we'll move on to item number nine. Um, and item number nine is discuss and take action to approve a return of fifty-one thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars and forty-two cents in the CIP tech. Accounting HR payroll upgrade project to the CIP technology equipment account pending board of finance approval.
Second.
Okay, so, um, this is basically, uh, funds that were not being used, uh, where we saved some money and we're just returning it back to the account. Um, and this is part of the work that Peter and Ben have been doing really over the last six months, really digging into these projects and finding, okay, do we need the funding anymore? Can we return it? So this is all good stuff. Any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye. Uh, item number ten, discuss and take action to approve a funding request from the technology department in the amount of thirty thousand dollars from the CIP technology equipment count. To the CIP telephone upgrade project pending board of finance approval.
Second.
So now we have another project that is, um, Ben actually been planning for for a while. Um, to upgrade the telephones in town, um, and we actually got, um. Uh, actually, is Art on here? Yeah, okay, why don't we let Art talk about it? I'm sorry, I'm confusing. But anyways, we we actually have, um, you know, contract pricing now that came in, and so some additional funding was gonna be used for the, needed for this. Go ahead, Art, you're, you can unmute.
Yeah, this is a bit of project that's been on the books for quite some time. It began with a few years back doing the upgrade at the police department phone system. Uh, and now we're looking to do the rest of the town and schools. Um, it's, uh, it it was put out to bid, we had three responders. Uh, and this was the low bid, and it's a company that we have done business with before that we're very pleased with. Actually, you know, we knew two of the three companies, uh, the third one was way out of line with the pricing and this, uh. It looks very good. The scope of the project is really replacing about eleven. Ten or eleven small phone systems that are linked together. Uh, with two systems, one, one here at town campus and one at Daniel Hand High School, excuse me. And those are, it's a, it's basically a redesign that leverages, uh, our data network a lot more than it currently does. And this will be a a good stepping stone for when we do have additional buildings to bring on. It'll be a lot less of an investment in the phones. Um, you know, they won't need another individual system. It's primarily very straightforward. Phone systems are. Mostly computer hardware and software now. Uh, you know, it's a server, it's a bunch of software. And then a lot of configuration and then some running around with handsets. So, um, you know, I don't, I don't think there's anything. Really crazy about this. We were just a little bit short on the bid, the low bid. Uh, but not bad because the numbers were really, really came up with the numbers over five years ago, so. Um, hopefully, we're in a good space, a good place. If there's any questions, I'm happy to try and help answer.
Any questions for Art? I know the staff is very excited to see this upgrade happen, and it's also gonna give a lot of features that we don't have in terms of. Um, being able to remote access, you know, and forwarding to cell phones and things like that, um, that will make. Life a little easier at times, um, especially for folks out in the field, so, um, we're excited to see this move forward. All right, with that, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Um, and following on the same thing, uh, item number eleven, discuss and take action to award a contract to Connecticut Communications LLC. For an amount not to exceed two hundred and seventy thousand dollars for the CIP telephone upgrade project as recommended by the technology department. And to authorize the first selectman to sign all documents associated with this award, budgeted into the capital improvement program technology reserve. Pending board of finance approval of additional funding. Okay. Uh, any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, passes unanimously. Great, thank you, Art. Forward. Uh, item number twelve, uh, discuss and take action to accept a recommendation from the facilities department. To award a contract to to BMP Construction for the Brown School Pre-K Room Conversion Project. For five hundred thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty-nine cents. And to authorize the first selectman to sign all contracts and documents associated with this award. Company was selected utilizing the, um, CROG EZQC program budgeted in the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five capital improvement plan.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All right, so, um, this is a project that, um, I I think was part of the CIP. Actively discussed a lot last year during the CIP process last year. Um, about some of the changes going on at Brown School. Um, so I thought if, um. Uh, um, you know, I don't know, Peter, if you just wanna walk through what's included in the project.
Yeah, uh, uh, Ben's gonna help us out here too with this, but it was to convert two classrooms, the the steam classrooms, uh, which are located down on the first floor, uh, first level. To convert them over to pre-K classrooms for the Brown School. Uh, this was, this gives us a perfect opportunity to incorporate this with the the site plan expansion. With drop-off, it's a first level, um, area, so that, you know, parents can, uh, actually, uh, access that whole area by dropping off their kids. On a first level coming into the backside of both classrooms. Uh, it's a conversion involving mostly the, where the most of the work is involved. Uh, adding the two bathrooms that are gonna be in, uh, those two areas, which will be, uh, which is the shared office at this point. Ben, did I cover everything there on, uh? What it is on, uh, you know, what what the plan is?
Yeah, it's a, it's a complete refresh in both of those spaces. Uh, just for clarity, the exterior work is a separate project. Um, that project is going out to bid. It's actually going to planning zoning on Thursday, um, in Acca tonight. Uh, but that'll, that'll go out to bid in the next probably month or so. Uh, this is the interior portion of the work, so as Peter said, it's a big portion of it is converting, um. Is actually establishing two new restrooms, um, in an area that's what what is now a storage room. Uh, these rooms are set up as like industrial art style classrooms. Uh, there's no ceilings in them. It's, it's got, uh, industrial lighting. Uh, they've just, there's asbestos tile flooring in there, there's electrical everywhere, there's dropdowns for equipment and things like that. So it's, it's really converting the space into a pre-K use. Uh, so we're building, uh, cubbies and millwork appropriate for pre-K kids. Sinks, uh, things of that nature, so it'll be like walking into, uh, two new classrooms. So this, this continues the momentum. We're using the same fit and finish. As the, uh, as the other classrooms that have been renovated at Brown over the past two years, um, just to get everything to kind of, uh, tie cohesively. So, um, this is one piece in, uh, you know, a lot of work that's happening at Brown over the summer.
Leave, uh, Dr. Cooks on for any other, uh, uh, curricular based questions that may come up.
I mean, I, I'm, uh, wanna get right out and say that I don't object to this project per se. Um, but I am very uncomfortable with the funding mechanism for it. Um, this is directly related to the referendum. Project, the construction of the new school, the renovation of Paulson and the renovation at Brown. To accommodate the new school organization. And we are seeking funding outside of the the referendum. Um, and, you know. It it is, it's a change in the program, I get it, and maybe it's something that after the referendum was discovered to make sense. But like we've done at Neck River, um, we've kept the money inside of the the referendum question. Um, so, um, I I I'm not, I'm not gonna support, um, the five hundred thousand from the CIP. I would support the project. Through the already allocated funds for the three-school project.
That was gonna be my question as well, is with this being part of that whole school renewal project, why is? Why is the funding being requested this way as going, as opposed to going through? The budget that was set aside through the referendum?
So, l- let's remind though, this has already been approved in CIP last year. So this was part of the extensive conversations last year. This, the board of ads submitted a package of projects last year. Um, and I I think Al and and Jen, you served on CIP last year. If you recall, there was a package that was submitted that included some additional work at Brown, and I know that there were conversations about. You know, what is new? Why wasn't this in the, uh, original, um, referendum? Um, and I wasn't part of those conversations at CIP, but, um, I know it was talked about extensively. And I think the CIP committee, if I recall, actually. Like, uh, value engineered it down a little bit and broke it up into different individual projects versus there was kind of a lump sum submitted. Um, so I'm just saying, we're not asking for the funding now, because the funding was approved through the CIP plan last year. If this is just to actually award the contract, uh, uh, unless I'm mistaken. Um, and so, um, you know, maybe it would be helpful. I I I know, I don't, I wasn't part of the CIP conversations last year, so. To kind of talk about the origins of the package that had been submitted, and I don't know if that's more appropriate for Dr. Cook, cuz I know Peter was not here, and neither was Ben, right? Uh, for that, so, um. But I think there was things that they realized as they got into this, like, we really kinda need to make these other changes. And that was not anticipated during the original referendum.
And and but, you know, CIP is a planning document, um. You know, we're talking about the funding, so, um. And 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 I went through the 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 approved CIP, which has an itemized list of the work to be done at Brown, and this isn't on it.
So. Last year, from last year.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, submitted versus, I just know this was a big topic.
This, so I'm referencing the document that was approved at referendum, the CIP that was approved at referendum. Um, and there's a detailed page for Brown School, and this isn't on it. Um, and and there's nothing that even looks remotely like it, um. So, but 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 even if it's in there, my objection is to the funding mechanism, not to the project itself. Um, so the fact that it is or isn't in CIP. I- is is not really relevant to the point I'm trying to make. That we, we, we went to the public on the Neck River School. To seek extra funding outside of the the bonding amount, um, which I supported. I thought it was a good idea, and I thought it was a good way to do it. I thought it was a, an efficient way to to make those changes, and the public overwhelmingly came back and said. No, we don't want you to do that. We want you to stick to the budget. And so we found money in the project, and I think. I, well, I don't think anything has changed with regards to that sentiment, so that's why I'm. You know, saying that.
I I guess, I guess first though, my question is though, that should have been the conversation last year when this was approved in CIP.
I, but, but, but I'm. We as a board never had a conversation about the the changing in the scope of the project at Brown School, and looking at the document, there is no evidence. That it's there, so if there were discussions, uh, in the CIP, they didn't get translated clearly into the document.
Okay, so, um. I I guess maybe Craig, you can talk about it, cuz I know this was like, there was a million dollars, I think, submitted by the Board of, uh, Education Facilities Committee. Um, and, um, there was a lot of conversation. I know that the CIP had, so I guess Jen and Al can speak to this. But, um, uh, eventually this was winnowed down and it was broken up into different projects, so I'll let Craig speak to that.
Yes, thank you, Peggy. I I would start with, I think the, there is differences with our two existing schools versus the new school. I just wanna draw that distinction. So both Paulson and Brown have had ongoing CIP projects. That were committed to to things related to the, to the reorg or or continuing to move the building forward that are, um. That weren't part of the original referendum, and so.
That weren't part of the original referendum, and so for the. Brown School in particular, $6 million was committed, that was never going to be enough to commit it, uh, change it over to a pre-k to five school, so. Items like parking, windows, playground, and, um, you know, we're part of CIP to get this, this done. Um, Planet Cycle Maintenance has also been committed to, to Brown and, and Paulson to continue to, to move the building forward. The other piece, the other funding stream for this was, um, the board's carryover funding, so, um. You know, with the new state law, the board had the 2% that it could carry over, it committed. I believe about $130,000 towards this project because we knew we needed to get that. That done of the, of the year-end funds for, for that, so it's a combination of the CIP and then the, um, carryover funds that the board. You know, um, voted on and submitted that to the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finances as, as our new process, this is year one, but we committed that, you know, we sent that letter. Um, as soon as that was done, and so, um, you know, this is a, a core project that we need to, need to get done by, by September in order to, uh, be ready for the rework in, uh, um, September.
Uh, and, and, and maybe I, I just need a small to agree, the, the public voted on Brown School being a kindergarten through fifth grade school. Um, it didn't vote on a, on Brown as a pre-k. Um, and, and all of the materials that went out and the question, um, that was voted on is. Neck River, pre-k through five. Brown, K through five. I, I, I'm not gonna second guess the wisdom of, of rethinking that and, and the wisdom of. Of making, um, space for pre-k at Brown, I, again, I'm not taking issue with that, it's. It's, this is. Th- this feels like a bit of a sidestep to the referendum. And if, and, and, and if we needed to adjust, if it's the right thing to do to adjust, we should do it within the confines of the money allocated for the projects.
It's a, if it's a sidestep of the referendum, Bruce, isn't that the point of why we would put it in CIP? Because it's a separate. It's a separate capital project, it's a separate line item, it's something different than what the voters voted on.
All of these projects are in the CIP. They are all CIP projects. Um, they, and, and that is the planning tool.
My point is, is it's a separate line item than the ones that were voted on via the referendum.
I, 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 the, 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 the CIP lists projects for Brown in detail. And, and doesn't have this in it, I, 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 I can't say any more than that, if, if it's somewhere else in the. Hundred-plus page document, then, then maybe it is, but. I don't know why it would be.
And in terms of the need to not have it at, uh, at, at Neck River, so, um, we'll have four preschool classrooms, um, next year, and that's. Based on students that weren't even born when we did the referendum, so, so. They're three, they'll be three years old next year, and they'll be coming into preschool, we've, I, we have to identify them through Childfind, and, um. We would not have the classroom space, we would, we would start off, we'd have to move portables over to Neck River if we were truly to start. Um, you know, and have, and require pre-k to be over there.
I, I mean, I think that the, 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 what I struggle with Bruce is that i- if we recall, there was the $89.9 million, right, and then there was the hundred and. Thirty million dollars of capital projects, right, we've known all along that. There are other capital projects that are gonna, that the schools are gonna need to be upgraded and things like that. Um, we're gonna continue to see things where the world does, didn't come to a halt on, you know, February 2022 in terms of what the plan was gonna be for the schools. Things are evolving in real time as we adapt to. Demographics, uh, adapt to whatever things we find happen during our project, as we've seen with Academy, things have just evolved. Um, I don't think that the school was trying to sidestep, I think they were just saying, this is a smarter thing to do. Um, and, um, you know, the, the Brown had very little funds allocated to it as a part of the referendum project, right? That was the smallest, it was six million versus, you know, building the new school. Um, this was discussed, I mean, I, I think. Um, I guess, my point is, this was all hashed out last year, in my view, right, that's why this project, uh, uh, this funding is there. Um, and, um. You know, I feel like. Yeah, yeah, it's at the contracting phase, like, I agree, like, if we were to be talking about this last year. This is a debate, right? Um, but I also hear you, because I think it's optics for the public, right? Um, and so one of the things we can talk about and debate more about this, I think, is when we cut, Neck River is gonna, the Neck, Building Committee is gonna be coming back. And we're gonna see where their budget is, right? We have the ability to shift funds between the different projects, we're gonna hear where Paulson's landing. We're gonna be probably, fortunately, under budget on Neck River for, in a number of areas. So then the question becomes, should this be paid for? Should we reimburse ourselves? Right, out of the Neck River funds for the money that's coming in out of CIP for this? If this is truly considered part of what should have been in the referendum. I think we could have that debate. Because that's when we're gonna be shifting funds around between the projects from the referendum, um, and talk about that. Um, uh. Because it's not, I'm not saying, I think what you're raising is fair, but there is a point in town where we just have to be like moving on and saying. We can't keep going back to the February 2022 referendum and saying that should have been in there, so therefore you gotta pay for it out of that money. I think we gotta just say, okay, we are where we are, some decisions were made, we need to add these bathrooms to make improvements so we can serve the pre-k population. Um, let's, projects are gonna be submitted for the schools and for all our buildings every year. Through CIP process, and that's the process we go through, this was approved through that process, and the funding was approved last year. So, um. But I'm ha, I, I think I'm willing, and I don't know if the board, I mean, you know, we can have that as part of the conversation when we, when Neck River comes back. And if there's funds left over from Neck River, we could reimburse ourselves for this.
Right, but if there isn't, if there isn't, then we will have, we will have taken money out of the, um. Out of the fund balance to do this. Um, because it's not funded in the CIP, is it? It's a special appropriation, isn't it?
No, no, it's funded. I mean, my understanding, this is coming directly from CIP, the Brown, there was a whole package of projects that were submitted to CIP last year that included. Um, that included Brown School, and, um, that were approved by the Facilities Committee at the Board of Ed. So, I, I mean, maybe we need to go back and look at that, but I, I just know, because there was some other funding that was in there, you know, uh, I. There was, there was a whole list of stuff, um, and it all went through. An extensive conversation, and I, and once again, I'm kind of deferring to our. Our Board of Selectmen, CIP members, and I know it's hard to remember what happened last year when you're like in the middle of this year, right? So maybe you guys took some time like thinking back about what was discussed last year.
Well, that's exactly what it is, it's hard to remember what we talked about last year when we're.
Right.
You know, literally just finished the process this week, but even as I look at my book right now for the 2425 CIP, like, I can't. This is this year's book that has last year's, you know, line item dollar amount approvals in it. And I'm seeing signage and wayfinding, FFNE and move management. Um, that's a, that's a large dollar amount right there was 800,000, so I don't know if this was part of that FFNE and move management. Um, that was approved, parking expansion, walk-in coolers and millwork replacement. And, uh, kindergarten play area are what we had in the CIP approved from last year, so. You know, again. Just trying.
So, so maybe, uh, Ben, Ben, do you know, because I know Brad inherited this package, just so you know, right? This was Bill McMinn was last year, Ben inherited this package, so maybe he could talk a little bit to it.
Sure, I, I, I went through the same exercise, because what I did with all of our projects, but, but more specifically this project was reverse, I, I'm a finance guy, so I. Reverse engineer everything based on following the money, and then I apply the facilities and contracting and construction to it. Um, so that was a, a bit of a challenge to do i- in this project. Um, but those projects that you just mentioned are all, are, they are the approved SIP projects, so I track every project that's outlined in our budget that SIP. What this, um, this project is part of Millwork and part of that FFNE Move Management. And, Dr. Cook, jump in if I'm, if I'm off here, but i- in everything that I read trying to figure out where the funding was coming from here. What it looked like was Brown School went out to referendum for a massive improvement project. That number was never, was never enough to cover everything that was needed to convert Brown into its school, whether PK was part of that or not, I, I don't know, I never really got involved in that aspect of it. Um, there were several projects cob, cobbled together, uh, that went into this summer. To continue the renovation of that building that were paid for directly through, um, the, the CNR, so. I think another thing we're confusing is the Capital Improvement Plan, which is over here, and then the Capital Improvement Funding, which is called CNRE, Capital Non-Recurring Expenses. So you pull down out of your SIP and you fund with CNRE. So those projects that, that Jen you just mentioned are all funded through CNRE. So, the way this, the way this specific project is funding the 500,000 is maxing out the Millwork project. Uh, the Millwork was a continuation of this summer where we were redoing all the Millwork in every classroom. Uh, that is also the project that accepted the funds that Dr. Cook just talked about from Capital Reserve, which was Board of Ed. Operating year-end funds that were diverted over to this, the board could, could withhold up to 2%. Uh, those were allocated to this project, which increased the project budget of the Millwork project, but the number you see in your CNRE. To that 322, we're maxing that out, then the residual, which is 178, is going into that FFNE Move Management Fund, uh, project. That project is also holding several other activities to get that school up and running for next year, including actually move management. Uh, which was actually supposed to go before the board today, for some reason, I think it just got left off the agenda for some reason. Uh, but is our entire gross move package throughout the entire district, it's about $150,000. Uh, so there, there are several pieces that were part of that, I, I did find a few documents again when I was reverse engineering all this. That in that at move management FFNE kind of catch-all project to like, finish off everything to get the school started. Uh, converting those two rooms into PK was there, and it was at that point where I kicked it into the next construction phase and started designing and building the project.
Okay, great, thank you, that was the reminder I personally needed, because, again, you see the numbers on these sheets, but they're not broken down. Into detail, so, okay, perfect, thank you, Ben.
A- a- and that's where I think that. You know, now you probably remember, there was a big conversation about this, right, because of the fact that. This was after the referendum, right, and it was a package that was coming. Um, and so I know that's why there was so much conversation last year, and I think there were some reductions that were made by CIP, if I recall. On some of these things by the committee to kind of scale it down a little bit. Um, so, um, so I guess that, Bruce, I guess my point is that from. A timing standpoint, like, last year was really the funding conversation. Um, but I think you're, it's a relevant discussion as we move forward and look at where we are in the project balances for. The, uh, bonding referendum, that we may opt to do that, right? Because ultimately, it is tied to the renewal plan, right? Um, and so would we want to pull from that, because the problem is, we can't just say, we're not gonna fund this now, it was approved funding, but also we have to do it in order to stick to the schedule. Um, and, and they'd have to read, if we don't add those bathrooms. Uh, we can't have a functioning pre-k space, right? Um, and so then we'd have to like, you know, it would cause a chain of events that would escalate into a lot more money than what this $500,000 is, I would think.
We, we moved money from Paulson pretty easily over to Neck River, why isn't that mechanism available to us now?
Uh, I, I don't, I would argue we don't need to do that, because we had, that conversation should have happened last year. We approved this, I, I know.
I would really, I would really like to, to, if, if either Genie or you could point me to the meeting where this board took up the discussion of. Um, expanding Brown to be a PK. Um, school, because I just don't remember it at all, and if, if I was part of it and I'd forgotten it, shame on me. Um, if it was, happened in the CIP at great detail, that detail was never translated back. To us. Um, so.
So, I, I don't think it's our, well. Well, I think that the, you know, Dr. Cook can talk about, first of all, we're not the experts about. You know, redistricting, uh, so there's gonna be different redistricting, right? Uh, there's gonna be different kids which thought they were going to the new school, now they're not, so.
Really talk about this and, 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 and maybe I have. Um, and I, I recognize I'm one in five votes here. Um, again, my issue is not with the project or the wisdom behind the decision to put. PK at Brown. My, my issue is, is, is the way we're funding it, I think it should come out of the referendum money, the bonding money. Um, because it is clearly, um, part of that project.
Okay, uh, well, I think that we, in order to proceed, I feel today we're awarding a contract, and so I think we should just vote on the contract. I think that the discussion of this, though, when we are looking at the balances of the referendum funding, it's a worthy discussion, right? Do we reimburse ourselves, uh, through the referendum funds for some of these. Ancillary projects that kind of evolved out of the renewal plan, new things that kind of came out of it, and I think that's a discussion that would need to be had later. When we know where we are with the balances in the, uh, other project accounts. Uh, that's my suggestion. Um, so, I, I think, you know, I, I'd like to at least move forward with the contract, because the funding has already been approved. Um, and, uh, and allow them to get on, because this is kind of critical, right, to get done. Um, isn't this over April break, I think you're doing these, uh, uh.
Asbestos removal during April break, yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Okay, so what, let's proceed with that, Bruce, but then the conversation will come back up when we talk more about the project, you know, the, the balances for the referendum, okay? Um, all right, so, uh, moving on, um, I'd like to make a motion to approve the award of the contract.
I think we're in discussion.
Yeah, we're.
That's right, I already moved it, so anyways, all in favor of, uh, item 12, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, and all, uh.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna abstain just for the record to show that I had a little, I, because, again, I don't, I, I don't think the project's a bad idea in any way, I just. Um, I don't, I don't want.
I hear you. Um, okay, good, so we have, uh, uh, four yeses and one abstention, Jean, for the record. Um, I, I, it's all worthy, what you're talking about. So, I, and, and we have, we have a lot going on, so that's why when I look at CI, the CIP people, I get it, it's, it's a lot of detail, and that's why we have our staff here. Um, who is living and breathing this every day, so I, I appreciate that they can kind of talk to this. Um, but we will carry on this conversation when we talk about the, uh, uh, Neck River project, okay? All right, so, um, so mo, item number 12 passes. So, um, item number 13. Is citizens comments, um, thank you Craig, uh, and Ben and, and Peter.
There are no citizens on, or no hands raised.
All right, great, so we'll move on to, um, item number seven. Um, and I just, for the public's benefit, we're gonna go into executive session that has to do with a lease negotiation, um, and when we come back. We will just be adjourning, so there won't be any further comment, uh, public comment after that. I'd like to make a motion to, uh, move us into executive session and to invite in, uh, Sam DeBura, uh, John, John Anako and Stacy Nobitz and Genie Stevens.
So moved.
Second, okay, great, all right, we are now gonna be moving into executive session and the, uh, webinar will be locked from the public, so. Thank you. Just give her a few minutes to do this.
I don't see John on.
Did, um, did you get a presentation on the, from the Academy?
Committee, is that?
Let's just make sure we're off and not recording, are we, are we not recording?
Oh, we can't talk about Academy in an executive session.
I'm, I'm just asking if I could get a copy of the presentation.
No, there was no, well, yes, there was a couple slides they put up, so I'll ask for those.
Those were previous, I think it was all previous stuff, it was from the.
You're recording again.
Okay, great, so just, we're back out of executive session, um, can I get a motion to, uh, adjourn the meeting? Hey, all in favor, say aye, meeting is adjourned, thank you, everybody.
Thanks.
Good conversation today, bye-bye.